Thursday, March 28th, and this is the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for tonight. And here we go. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take
We have roll call.
Yeah. Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Magai.
Here.
Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
Chair Keldorf is absent, and we have quorum.
All right. Is there any public communication for this evening that's not in the, in the packet?
No, 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 no new communication received.
All right. The first item, item, are there any written communications?
No, no written communication.
Okay. Is there any public communications? Are there members from the public that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay. All right. Well, we'll close public communication for now for items that do not relate to the agenda. The first item is the consent calendar, which is the approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 14th.
How move to approve?
I present, yeah, I present an option to approve the minute from last, from the last meeting.
Okay.
A motion.
All right.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Magai.
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Yes.
Motion passes for all.
All right. Item G is Continued Business, and we have a public hearing tonight. This is an environmental assessment, number EA 1344. It's a general
Just want to note, the Continued Business, it looks like there's none
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under new public hearings.
I'm new to reading, so that worked out great. Thank you, Joaquin. You're right. So no Continued Business. All right. So item H, New Public Hearing. This is Environmental Assessment Number EA 1344. It's a General Plan Amendment, number GPA 3301, with a Zone Change Number ZC 2301, and Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA 2301, implementing the Housing Element Program Number Six, which is a provision of adequate sites, and Program Number Nine, which is the ESMC amendments, to increase the allowable density and adopt new objective development standards in the R3 zone and housing element sites inventory site. That was mouthful, but do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Vice Chair Heschler and fellow commissioners. I will be doing the presentation on this item tonight. This item is essentially a continuation of the city's ongoing efforts to implement the city's housing element that was adopted in November in 2022. I'll try to keep the presentation as short as possible. Be happy to take your questions along the way or at the end. So as a refresher, the housing element has 11 programs, each with a different focus. Since the housing element was adopted, we have made substantial progress in implementing all the programs, and we gave you an update last month on all the implementation items that we've sort of checked off the list so far. The focus tonight is on two of the project, two of the programs. Number Six, Provision of Adequate Sites, and Number Nine, the El Segundo Municipal Code Amendments, which are highlighted on our slide here. Jumping right in, Program Number Six has five objectives. And we've made progress on the first and last objectives. The first objective was to rezone sites to accommodate sort of a shortfall from the lot, from the previous housing element. And we did address that already through the rezoning for the Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan Project. Item Number Five, Update to the Downtown and Smoky Hollow Specific Plans. We've been making a lot of progress on those two fronts, especially on the downtown. And next month, we'll be bringing an item to you on the downtown update. But we're focusing tonight on three of the objectives under this particular program, objectives two through four. The first one is, number two is to rezone sites and to establish two new overlay districts that would allow for higher density residential developments, the mixed-use overlay and the housing overlay. Along with the new overlays come new development standards and design standards to sort of regulate the sites on, in those overlay areas. And the number four is a related code amendment to allow projects that include affordable units to go through a more streamlined approval process. So as you know, for the eighth year period from 2021 to 2029, the city needs to incentivize construction of 521 units. So that's, that is our RENA allocation from the state. And 29 of those affordable units, as I mentioned, were sort of already addressed through that Pacific Coast Commons rezoning. The proposed rezoning here and establishing the new overlays will help address, address the rest of the RENA requirements. Going into the overlays themselves, so this is a map showing the sites that will be, that are proposed to be rezoned with the mixed-use overlay. There's four sites in particular. The proposed density is 75 units to the acre, which will potentially result in up to about 335 additional residential units on those four sites. The other overlay, the second overlay is the housing overlay, and this is focused on properties that are currently zoned R3, multifamily residential. It contains five sites, which is actually a subset of the properties that were identified in the housing element as the housing overlay. These sites have a higher redevelopment potential, and in combination with the mixed-use overlay sites that I just showed you, we believe can meet our minimum RENA requirements. If you recall, this is the overlay map that was in the adopted housing element. If for any reason we determine that we're not meeting our RENA requirements in a few years with the sort of a smaller rezoning, we could potentially look into some additional sites from this map that's in the housing element in the future.
But those are currently not in the
They're currently not in what we're proposing to you tonight. That's right.
Hey, Paul, I'm sorry, before you
Yeah.
Can you back up to those two slides and remind our viewing audience how you selected those sites and how the increases of density were determined?
Yeah, there are, the state has what is called a Housing Element Law that sets certain parameters for all housing elements and for selecting sites for rezoning. The idea there is to find sites that can feasibly, let's say, produce additional units. And so, for example, we looked at characteristics, characteristics such as whether the site is developed or not. So if it's a vacant lot, it's easier to develop it, right? If it's a site that has maybe a, a large parking lot and a small building on it. We looked at the sizes of sites, because, you know, if it's a small site, it's very hard to squeeze a lot of housing units on those sites. So we looked at different factors. We essentially went through the entire western portion of the city, site by site, to see which ones have the highest redevelopment potential. And to answer the question about the, the density that we selected or were proposing, we had help from consultants who were able to kind of study the, the sites and let us know which ones feasibly could actually fit the number of units that are permitted, that would be permit, that we permitted with the proposed densities. So that is kind of a short summary of how we selected those sites. Does that help?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's just a nice reminder for all the home viewing audience as well. And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, just, excuse me, Jay, that these are not hypothetical. They're actual property or lots that could be developed regardless if the, the people that own the properties choose to do so or not. They're just sites that have been identified. Nobody's forced to do it. It's just allows us to then tell the state that we have the capacity to fill our RENA numbers because we've identified these sites. It's not a personal attack on the person that owns that, that we're going to take the property and develop it, right?
That's correct. Very well put. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I may, I think that's an excellent clarification. I also sort of wanted to add additional color to Paul's remarks that this site selection was heavily vetted through the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, or we, you know, refer to as HCD, who have guidelines or sort of strict standards that these properties have to meet in order for HCD to, to consider them viable sites as Paul described. And so in that process that Paul described, we were also working with HCD to make sure that this met their minimum requirements, and it would be acceptable for them to, to allow these sites to be included in that demonstration of capacity. One of the things that they require is that there's an ongoing engagement effort with the property owners that the city has to ensure that property owners don't feel like, you know, you're just, are you just coming and developing my property? And so provide those clarifications, but also ensure that that property owner is willing to have their site on this map and willing to have their property subject to the rezoning. And so it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy process, but it's a very important process that we went through prior to the housing element even being adopted, you know, a couple of years ago at this point. And so that's an excellent clarification. We are not approving any projects through this. We're just demonstrating capacity, and we're facilitating the ability with the rezoning and an increased density in order to satisfy the state's requirement to see. We want this number, and we want to see it, you know, at, at these locations.
And then to clarify again, the term overlay is what you're asking us to approve. It's a rezoning in theory.
That's correct.
To allow it should hypothetically it ever happen down the road.
Exactly.
And any, any project on these sites barring they exercise other authorities that are given by the state, like affordable housing, there's certain by right developments, but, but that could be done anywhere. But other than, other than that, all of these sites, if there were to be a housing development proposed, would still come back and go through our standard entitlement process as, as they would today. But there's exceptions to that, but that could, that could apply anywhere. The state has passed several laws to give by right approvals for affordable, affordable projects. And so in any case, it would still come back to you for a non-affordable project.
Right. So I, I hear two important things. One is any indication on these maps, you've already discussed it with the landowners, and they've been part of this process. And they're not agreeing to do it, or they're not agreeing to make that development change. You're just zoning it for that reason. Yeah. And then secondly, the reason we're doing this at all is the state is requiring that the city of El Segundo and other cities throughout California increase their density to meet these regional, regional housing need assessment numbers.
Yeah. Along with the two overlays and the site selection come standards. So as part of this rezoning process, we also have to establish in our zoning code standards that developments would have to meet, you know, in order for projects to sort of proceed. So density is one of them, which we just touched on. But the development standards have to sort of be put in place so that it's actually feasible to achieve those, those densities that are proposed. So for example, if you look at the table on the screen, height, you know, the current height for the sites that are zoned mixed-use overlay, the height limit is about 40 feet for those along PCH, 35 feet for the one site near Smoky Hollow. We propose to increase the height allowance in that overlay to 52 so that they can fit perhaps an extra story in those additional units that the density would theoretically allow. The same thing happened with each of the standards in this that were, that were proposed in the ordinance, to just make sure that it is feasible to achieve the densities. But there's also standards in there to sort of guide the design, make sure that any new developments or the additional height is compatible with the context. So there are standards such as modulation standards that I'm showing here, an example on the screen, that limit the length of sort of a flat wall planes that require the top floor to be smaller than the floors below it. That way, you're kind of making new development more compatible with the context in the neighborhood. Same thing applies to the housing overlay, specific standards for that particular overlay, an increase in height compared to the height allowed in the R3 zone. Not as much as the mixed-use overlay, but there is an increase there to help make that potential density feasible. And again, there's several design standards as well to help make new development compatible with the neighborhood.
Paul, if I can also interject, just to provide some additional context. If the commission remembers, and for the benefit of the public, the genesis of those standards, if you recall, came from a, a couple of study sessions with John Kaliski Associates, who held, I think, at least two study sessions with the Planning Commission, originally intended to, when we were looking at the larger overlay areas in the R3 zone, but certainly applicable to the, the overlay, I mean, these site specifics. And so the genesis for those standards come from that study that was done where, you know, the commission and anybody who showed up, you know, provided feedback about what the priorities were. You know, remember, one of the things was rather than height, we'd rather build out horizontally than, than, so, you know, reduce height as much as possible. We played with parking a little bit, the, the modulation, as Paul mentioned. And so just so you know where those standards came from, that was, that, that was formulated from, from that study. And Paul sort of converted that into this, this purpose, since we're not pursuing the larger effort at this point.
No, that's, that's, that's a great point, Michael, because we did spend a lot of time vetting these things. We spent many hours going through it, so it's important to remember.
Okay. The other aspect of Program Number Six in the housing element is the amending the zoning code to allow, as I alluded to earlier, development projects, multifamily development projects on those, on those overlay sites. If they propose 20% of the units at affordable rates to households of lower, low or very low incomes, they, those projects can avoid the discretionary review process and go through a more administrative process. That's sort of an incentive to help provide more affordable units in the city.
Can, can you explain that a little more?
Yes.
If it's administrative, if it's approved over the counter, does that mean you're no longer looking at setbacks? You're no longer looking at some of the design things that we were trying to, to keep in check?
You are, but it is done at the staff level. So we would make sure that we reviewed plans, and they conformed with the development standards and design standards that, some examples of which we went over a minute ago. So they would still have to conform with all our standards. It's just that they would not necessarily go through a CUP or Site Plan Review Process and go through a public hearing process.
So if somebody wanted to do a tower that was 100 feet high, and it was all affordable housing, that's, that's not approved by, right?
That's a, that's a special case. There are certain state laws, new state laws that allow projects with high percentages of affordable units to bypass our discretionary review process. Yeah. And even in some cases bypass the actual zoning on the property. Yeah. But that is something that's essentially out of our control. It is sort of mandated by the state.
So a significant reason why we hired John Kaliski when we did to do that was, was because we were, we're, our attempt is to exercise whatever local authority we could preserve and maintain from a design and development standpoint. So that, and that also included landscaping. If you kind of recall, you know, we even included landscaping in something like that because that has a, a significant beneficial impact to the aesthetic, especially when you lose the ability to control the built form of the building. That was another mechanism that we could sort of exercise to, to provide modulation and break up building massing. But that, what, you know, as Paul's explaining, that loss of our ability to, to control some of the process, if somebody were to meet some of these minimum standards, they can exercise a streamlining and not, and sort of bypass the Planning Commission. In addition to that, as Paul explains, even the zoning code standards themselves, if they can prove, there's, there's, there's a little bit of science behind it, but if they can justify how that essentially renders a project infeasible, we have to sort of throw our hands up in the air and, and not, you know, not require that zoning code requirement. It's not, you know, it's not as easy as just putting something on paper. You have to prove it. But it is certainly a possibility. And so the reason why we endeavored down that study to develop those objective design standards were to give ourselves as many tools as we possibly can in, in our zoning code. So in the event somebody wanted to permit by right, we at least have those standards in place that the commission felt were important, that you would normally ask for during a public hearing.
Right. Have you seen with your colleagues in other cities that have gone through this and have had real heartburn?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to knock on wood. We, we haven't seen it here. And, you know, hopefully, when this goes through, I won't have to knock on wood anymore. But, but common, you know, you'll, you'll see it in the paper, even our neighboring cities here, Redondo, what they're referring to as the builder's remedy is a very popular term right now. It's been around for ages, but until recently, you know, you have developers who are exercising this builder's remedy right. They're going into Santa Monica and Redondo and Beverly Hills. And, and they are plopping down projects that have no compliance with, otherwise what, what the zoning code requires and at a density that makes their project pencil, and the city doesn't have a whole lot of leverage at that point. So this, some of this helps us avoid the builder's remedy, if, you know, once we get our housing element certified. But if somebody were to propose a 20% affordable project or 100% affordable project, there's, there's leverages that they can pull that the state legislation allows them to get a streamlined approval process and be essentially exempt from certain zoning standards.
If I, if I could just add, I, I don't think we can emphasize enough how much of this is framed by our, our attempt to retain as much local control as possible. So, and, and with regard to the standards, it's important that, as Michael, the point Michael has made, as far as for these ministerial, over the counter approvals, the state is telling us that the standards that have to apply have to be objective. So basically something that a reasonable person can look at and verify, you know, is it black? Is it white? You know, is it three feet tall or not? So any subjective standards that may have previously applied when things were coming through a discretionary hearing process, those are in large part getting thrown aside in favor of very clear, objective standards that staff has done a great job of, of formulating. But when we do look at these changes that we're looking at, it's, it's very much a response to the state essentially usurping local control and police power, which it, local cities have generally exercised for, for housing and zoning.
Thanks, Joaquin.
Well, that was a summary of Program Number Six and what we're doing with this item tonight as far as Program Number Six is concerned. The other program that I mentioned earlier was Number Nine, the El Segundo Municipal Code Amendments. As, as you can see, Program Number Nine calls for amendments in 12 different topic areas. Nine of those amendments have been completed already. That was done last year. I'm sorry, let me go back. We're going to be focusing tonight on two of them, Number 10 and 11, R3 Zone Density and the Site Plan Review Findings. And there'd be the one more code amendment to work on later this year. And that, that would complete the Program Number Nine in the housing element. So within a, less than two years, we will have covered all the code amendments required in the housing element. So regarding R3 Zone Density, you know, very plainly, the current standard today is, is different for properties that are over 15,000 square feet from those that are 15,000 square feet or less. So the proposed standard will create a single So the proposed standard will create a single standard for all R3-zoned properties, and it will slightly increase the density compared to the higher density that we have in the city today. 30 units to the acre is sort of a density number that is identified in state housing law. And essentially, it means that, or at least the state assumes that at that particular density of development, the market will naturally produce some affordable, naturally affordable units. It's high enough to allow people to build more units and not have to sort of charge more for rent and so forth. Yeah. So that was kind of the intent behind that particular number in this particular code amendment.
And that's throughout the R3 zones in El Segundo?
That's right. Throughout the R3 zones outside of the overlay areas that we discussed earlier. The other code amendment has to do with Site Plan Review Findings. Site Plan Review is a discretionary process. So we have a relatively large project. They have to go through a Site Plan Review, a public hearing before the planning commission. And then these are the findings, there's some current findings that the planning commission has to make in order to approve developments. HCD told us that those findings are kind of general in nature and kind of vague. So they wanted to add a little bit more specificity to those findings so that it helps ensure sort of outcomes when somebody applies for a Site Plan Review, it's easy to meet the findings, sort of streamlining the process. So this is just a little comparison between the current language and the proposed language. So, for example, in that third existing finding, there's a language such as "Affecting the orderly and harmonious development and the general welfare in the city." So that's kind of very general, very broad in nature. So we've, you know, proposed changing that to a project that has no specific impacts on health and safety. So that's a little bit more specific. It gives a developer or the public a little bit more certainty about what is meant by that finding. So that's the effort here, to try to make things a little clearer. There is an additional code amendment that we're proposing. It's not part of a housing element program, but it kind of came up due to a recent change in state law, SB 684, which essentially requires that small residential subdivisions up to 10 lots go through a ministerial process, not have to go through a public hearing process. It wasn't a requirement during this last housing element round, but if we did not address that now, it will probably be there next time we update the housing element. So we're just doing that now to make the city's code more consistent with current state law.
Is there a minimum lot size or land holding that can be divided into 10 lots?
Well, the city, the zoning code does have minimum lot sizes. So generally speaking, it's around 5,000 square feet for residential properties, single-family residential, for example. So, yeah, so it would have to be a very large property, something similar to the 540 East Imperial specific plan that knew multifamily and single-family development, that was several acres in size. But there aren't a lot of parcels in the city like that, so this is not a very likely scenario to occur, but because it is current state law, we're updating our municipal code to be consistent.
Gotcha. So if a minimum lot were 5,000 square feet, the beginning lot would need to be 50,000 feet?
Correct.
Before you could do that. Okay.
Yeah. And that is kind of a summary of the proposed amendments and the resolution before you. As part of this review process, we did conduct an environmental review of the proposed amendments. And staff believes that an addendum to the Certified EIR for the city's general plan is the appropriate document. And based on the limited scope of these amendments, the limited number of sites, as I mentioned, we don't anticipate substantial or more significant impacts beyond what was studied in the general plan EIR. And in conclusion, the proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan. In fact, they are specifically implementing provisions of the general plan, the housing element. The amendments will not have impacts that are different or more significant than those studied under the general plan environmental impact reports. And for those reasons, we recommend that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2935, recommending city council approval of these proposed amendments. That concludes our presentation.
Okay. And that's a good clarification. We're just, we would adopt this, but it still has to go to city council?
We adopt, you would be adopting a resolution to recommend city council approval of these amendments.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff before we open up public comments?
No, for me.
Okay, thank you, Paul. At this point, we would open it up to public comment. And does anybody have any comments about what you've just heard? Yeah, if you can come on up to the podium and introduce yourself.
I'm Maria Barton, resident of El Segundo for almost 30 years. I participated in a lot of the Pacific Commons discussions. And so by saying rezoning, that sounds to me that you are changing the zones. I'd like to see what the changes that you made, I don't recall what the first changes were. So do you have anything, because the lines are really vague on the streets. So are you changing Pacific Commons in any ways, in a different area, or is that still going through?
Paul, you want to take that?
Sure, yeah. There are no amendments to the Pacific Commons property proposed as part of this. Some properties immediately adjacent to the Pacific Coast Commons project are part of this proposed zone change. So directly to the north of Palm Avenue, the vacant Stickenstein?
Oh, it is.
Restaurant is one of those sites that is proposed to change zoning.
Okay. And so by contractors, are you talking one contractor that would do all of this work? Or is it open to whomever bids?
Would you like me to answer that?
Please, Paul, yeah.
Yeah, it simply depends on the individual property owner and anyone who would work with that individual property owner to propose a project. So the city's not building or hiring contractors to build new housing. It is simply changing the rules on certain specific properties. And the property owners will then have an option to develop or redevelop their property.
Because the Stickenstein has been a bit of a blight as far as raking on right across the street with all of its windows open and shattered windows, I think.
And I think, Paul, if I may, just making the point that should ownership change hands of this parcel hypothetically, there's no mandate that they turn around and thus create housing, but it's just that if a future property owner decided to create housing, that would be now allowable due to the zone change. But this is no concrete mandate or plan that this or any of the particular parcels involved eventually become housing.
Yeah.
So there's no, like, due date as far as when implementation of any of this needs to be done?
That's correct.
Okay.
All we're doing is saying that use can be allowed on the land. There's no, we're not saying this is going to be done.
It's going to happen at all. It's just part of the city being able to adopt enough or identify enough properties in the city for...
To these estates.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It's private property, so...
But what's going on with the Pacific Commons?
We could ask.
I think it sounds like maybe we can connect afterwards and have a conversation about Pacific Coast Commons if you had questions about the other, Paul or myself or Eduardo, we're happy to hang out afterwards.
We could also ask at the end of the meeting.
Or that.
And for an update, we'll ask.
So in addition to Stickenstein, north of that, would that be the Travelodge or Bank of America?
Yeah, the IHOP property, the Travelodge and the Bank of America properties as well, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, going back to Michael's earlier comment about the dialogue with HCD about running these sites by them, as the state has, you know, taken much more of a hold of the ability to zone and determine where and how housing is implemented, and as the housing crisis has exacerbated, they have become more strict in discounting what cities are proposing as potential housing sites. So it's no longer the case, as it had been for quite a long time, that basically a city could just, you know, throw any address out there and that would be taken as a given potential site. So we have seen other cities get, have their proposed sites rejected. So it's great that staff has done the front-end legwork to work and have that dialogue with HCD. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Anybody else like to make a comment, public comment? Okay, saying none, I'm gonna close public communications, and then I guess all further discussion will come from the dice.
I don't really have much to follow up. I think it was a wonderful presentation, Paul. I think, like, for a hypothetical, let's say, I owned a property, the old Jolly Rogers-Stickenstein area, and I inherited it, however I got it, it doesn't matter, but somebody wants, I want to develop it, and I want to, I might not want to develop it so that it's a first-class operation. Let's say I want to develop it to its maximum. And 20% by right would mean specifically, I want to bypass the city. So I want to, I mean, it's hypothetical, guys, you know I'm gonna ask this question. So I want to build affordable housing straight across the board. I'm gonna max it out. And I know that we have some guidelines. I know that I could then build 100% of my land, have maximum affordable housing on there, and pretty much gonna, I'm gonna certainly help the city and then I'm, you know, gonna be able to bypass what the city wants. I think what's interesting is that it's important that that the city has these sorts of features and benefits in place so that people that do want to develop, I know that as a developer, let's say I own the property, I'd have to pencil out my affordable housing versus either condo or what I could sell. And so I know it pencils out in that respect. But I think it's important that developers and property owners have that communication with the city because you really don't, you don't want that. You don't want somebody just to bypass and say they bought this piece of property and they're just gonna max it out and develop it, and then God knows what happens, you know, five or 10 years down the road and how things... My point is, it's impressive that you've got these kinds of things in place so that hopefully, you've got good communication with the people that want to develop it. It just, I was just thinking in my head about the 20% by right, and can you explain that further, Paul? What that means, what that would mean for me since I own the property? What does that mean?
It means, first of all, I'll just summarize literally what the amendment does. If you propose to build, let's say, 100 residential units on a property, if you agree to have a sort of a covenant or a restriction on 20 of those 100, 20%, to be rented out to households that have low or very low incomes, you can go through a faster permit review process and avoid extra time and extra expense and extra environmental review. So save a lot of money and time in getting permits.
So what would the number be if I wanted to bypass the city altogether? I'm gonna build 100 units.
20%?
Okay.
It's 20%. That's what we're saying?
That is variable.
All right, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll jump in there. I think it's best to picture it as a sliding scale. And this is relative to different areas that we're seeing in planning and zoning, but especially with density bonus. So essentially, the more of a given number of units a developer is willing to restrict to affordable housing, and depending on the level of affordability. Because again, I think at the last meeting, we talked about...
But from an owner developer standpoint, I'm gonna build 100 units, 20% I'm gonna say I'm gonna provide for the city.
There's a max of 100%. There is a scenario where, you know, they can bypass, you have to pay prevailing wage, and it does get costly. But there is a scenario of unlimited density for completely deeply affordable 100% housing. So that's not...
So long as it's at least 20%.
100%.
100%.
But there's a sliding scale along the way. So there are different sort of, as a developer is more willing to commit more and more of a given amount of units, they get more concessions or waivers. There's basically fewer roadblocks along the way. And so the extreme example is 100% affordability. I don't think any of us have ever seen that, but legally, that is feasible.
But even if it's 100 units, 20% I'm going to build affordable housing, now for the most part, then allows me to almost build what I want.
Well, that's all, that's, again, it's a sliding scale, so I think 20% is particular to this zone. But in any residential zone, the law has developed a scale. So it's like if you do 5% of a certain kind of affordability...
But for any potential upcoming development that's going on, I think it's really important that we, that negotiations with the city and staff is really important so that that doesn't happen, is what I'm trying to say. We need to allow that. We need to allow the development of residential. And then we need to discuss how much of that are they willing to provide for affordable housing so that there is still a sense of an interaction with the city staff so that we're building, allowing these people to build quality products. That's what I'm trying to say. I think it's really important.
Absolutely.
Because you just don't want to have, you just don't want to bypass the system. The city needs to stay, you guys need to stay engaged with that. We gotta allow it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I think, I think that frames a lot of this effort where when the state is saying, if you developer offer this amount of affordability, we're gonna make your process generally that much easier and cut out the local jurisdiction's ability to tell you how to build what you're gonna build. As they're paving that path, I think efforts like this are maximizing our ability, at least, to have that dialogue to impose as many restrictions that are still left to local jurisdictions.
Yep. Thank you for that.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay.
I will. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I guess I just wanted to say that this has been a long time coming. I mean, we've been working on this for a long time, so it's not like we just showed up tonight and are making this decision now. I mean, staff has done an amazing job of pulling together these dozens and dozens of documents. So, and once this is approved, that is when our housing element is approved. And you said that could still be two years away. Did I hear that correctly?
No, I, once this is approved, of course, I think, as Paul mentioned, it goes to city council for actual approval on tonight's...
That's what I meant, after city council.
Our housing element has been approved. It has not been certified. HCD issued a letter saying that your housing element is mostly, mostly satisfies the statute requirement, and we will not certify it until you finish this rezoning. So, I mean, the difference is the certification language. So this piece of the puzzle will, you know, get our housing element certified from HCD. And that shouldn't take, well, I really don't know how long it'll take. I think they are under a new mandate to return comment in less than 60 days. But this is a very easy thing for them to check off the box, and we've maintained ongoing communication, keeping them up to date where we're at. keeping them up to date where we're at, so I anticipate, you know, us getting that final opinion letter that we're certified soon after we give it to them.
And I think Paul's earlier slide, well, I think one, one note is that we're not, we're doing sort of the rezoning and closing that loop in, in segments, so this is a giant chunk of that, but there's still a little, a bit more following this that will have another code amendment and follow through this process again.
Yeah, there's, there's other efforts, sorry, go ahead, Paul. You can probably explain better than I.
The housing element has, as I mentioned earlier, eleven different programs, and some of those programs have ongoing activities. So we will be working on implementing the housing element every year until the end of the period. So every year we will be submitting a detailed report to the state on all of our activities, including, for example, doing a lot of outreach, doing community meetings, doing presentations to various commissions and boards, updating our website frequently, those types of things. So we will, and I believe I misspoke, so this should actually, this code amendment, although there's other related amendments forthcoming, this one will put us on the path, presuming HCD accepts it for certification. So this is, this is the last piece there. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I will move to adopt Resolution Number 2935, recommending that the city council adopt an addendum to the El Segundo general plan FEIR, approval general plan amendment, and adopt a zone change and zone text amendment implementing housing element number six, provision of adequate sites, and program number nine, El Segundo municipal code amendments.
All right, second?
Vice Chair, before the vote is called, I, I just want to, you know, thank the commission. As you mentioned, Vice Chair, this has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of sort of blood and sweat, and hopefully not a lot of tears, but, but there's been a lot of work on staff's end and Eduardo and Paul, you know, really this began in earnest in, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, to get the housing element to a place where it could be adopted, you know, going back and forth with HCD, and then this piece of it, this sort of, this final piece for certification, the better part of the last year to year, year and a half to do the environmental piece, the study with John Koliski amongst all those other programs that Paul outlined, you know, the staff has made a tremendous effort towards completing several programs. There's eleven programs, we're, we're marching through them very efficiently, and it's something to be extremely proud of and thankful for, and, you know, I, I think the state acknowledges that. They, they, they leave us alone, which is different than a lot of other agencies, and so, you know, a lot of accolades go to, to Paul and Eduardo, but their, their efforts and really sort of carrying the torch on this. We're not done, will probably never be done, but I, you know, I'm really thankful for staff and for the commission and then the collaboration that, that we've been able to really proactively, you know, sort of knock these things out, you know, one at a time, and, and frequently several at a time. So thank you, Paul and, and commission.
Hopefully no tears, but potentially blood, Michael.
Right, well, okay, actually, yeah, hopefully no blood, yeah.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Inga?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Magai?
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler?
Aye.
My motion passes for all.
Hey, I have a question. I assume city council has been along for the ride the whole time of everything we've talked about, or is when this goes to them the first time they're going to see any of this?
No, we've provided several, if not all of the same updates that we have to the commission, to the council now. We've had more updates to the commission because it's included study sessions, but the same update that Paul made to the commission a month ago, or, yeah, a month ago, we also made to the council, and so they've been, you know, following along as well.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering about the next step on this, how contentious it might be, or if it's just more, you know, they, they, they're up to speed. Guess we'll find out.
Yeah, no prediction.
New business? Any new business from city?
Sure, so, so the, the next item is, is actually selecting a planning commission member to deliver a presentation to the city council, probably in May. This is probably pretty new to the commission because I think for the most part, the council has kind of just left the commission to its own devices, because, you know, you guys have your, your typical marching orders in terms of, you know, reviewing development projects and, and, and use permits and, and those types of discretionary applications, but the council has, has wanted to, to kind of expand, getting, getting kind of an update from the various commissions and committees and boards that the city has. And so, for example, you know, we're, we're gearing up to have the senior board deliver their, their, their plan or their presentation to the council. And, you know, unlike the board where they kind of have a work plan in terms of, you know, overseeing the Park Vista, the commission doesn't really have, you know, things that they oversee in, in that regards. Again, it's more discretionary applications, and so really I think what, what the commission or the council is really seeking is, you know, some presentation from the commission, and we, as staff, we would work with you to deliver that. And I think it's more in terms of, hey, this is what we've accomplished this last year, these are the various development projects that have come before us, you know, we've established a subcommittee for, for the multimodal transportation issue, and we're working towards that, and that's something that, you know, we'll probably be working on throughout the year and come to you, to council at, at the latter part of the year, or whatever transpires out of that. But I think it's just really, you know, at the end of the day, having a presentation that we can collaborate with, with, with you all to then deliver, you know, to, to the council in terms of basically what the, what the commission has done over the past year and, and what you all foresee for the, for the following year.
And that might be separate or the same as presenting a particular topic that we have going on that month?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. I mean, that's a good idea.
Well, I mean, we've done that kind of ad hoc in the past, you know, when there's topics that come up, you know, I'm thinking over the last several years, a topic comes up that maybe there's a little nuance, that city council wasn't pretty to, you know, be nice, it's nice to kind of come in and just either, I guess you wouldn't be representing the, the board or the commission in that case, it would just be, you know, I'm Jay Heschler, I'm a planning commissioner, and here's what we have discussed. But, you know, giving, giving city council an update, a general update makes a lot of sense, too, so.
And that's a once a month, is that a suggestion?
No, this is something that the, the council is seeking to have done annually, and I think this year, I think they're shooting to, to have it, or targeting it for the month of May.
No, no, annually, on a, basically each commission will, will take a month. So right now, May's booked, I think April might be booked. Yeah, April's booked, May's booked. I think maybe June, you know, we don't have a timing, per se, right now, but the effort to, you know, the executive team who all sort of serve as liaisons to their relative commissions are kind of projecting out, you know, Rec and Park is going to give an update, that DEI committee is going to give an update. So I don't have a month yet for the planning commission, but we wanted to get ahead of it so that when we get on the calendar, which will likely be mid, late summer, if not fall, depending on, because Park and, or Park and Rec, they have like seven commissions and committees, so they're going to be, they're going to be giving updates every month for a while here. So I don't have a month yet, but what, when we do, you know, we just wanted to get ahead of it and be able to have a couple conversations and.
I'd, I'd love to see Jay as our vice chair.
I'd love to have Michelle here, which may help us make the conversation.
That's a fair point, and, and you guys can continue this until you have, you know, all five present to, to make the call.
And that's true, considering we do have some time before we actually.
Okay.
Get you before the council, yeah.
I'm good to wait till we have a full, a full committee here.
Naturally makes sense for Michelle to do it as, as the chair, right? And also since she's not here, we can say we voted. But I think as the chair, she probably, it makes sense.
Yeah, I, well, I, I would suggest that we continue the conversation until she's back, and then we can decide who it is.
Perfect.
Fair enough, we'll re-adjournize it.
Okay, all right. And, yeah, I don't mind waiting till the end of the year because then we'll have a full year worth of projects under our belt, although it could be, you know, whatever was done in the last year, you know, May to May, whatever.
Yep.
Well, I, I guess on that note, it, it might also be with a lot of big projects coming our way, it might be good to give the council a heads up of what we're doing as well, look back in, like, hey, these are the big ticket items coming, so, either way, I mean, it's good to do this.
Okay, do we need a motion to continue that topic?
No, we'll, we'll just re-adjournize it. We, we know that.
Okay.
It was an agreement to wait until our chair gets back.
All right. Is a report from community development director or his designee?
Nothing from myself at this time. Eduardo, do you have anything?
No, nothing, nothing to report.
Okay. City attorney's office report?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Lastly, we have planning commissioners' comments.
I think we should ask what's going on with Pacific Commons, if we could just get a quick update so that the listening audience can, and we can all get an update on it.
Yeah, I periodically contact the developer about that, and they're just kind of waiting for the market conditions to be there so they can proceed. So at this point, because of the economy and the real estate market conditions and financing issues, they're, they're just waiting, and that's.
They've got the paperwork, the approval from the city, they're just ready to, they're just waiting for the market conditions for them to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And any, any update on the, the gateway signage that's been approved, that's been, do we have timeline, do we, anything at all on that?
It has been approved. I don't have a timeline, but I, you know, I, I promised to have a conversation with the public works director to figure out what that timing is.
Should start in the next six months, in theory, in theory.
I don't, I don't know. I, I, I can't even theorize on it, I'm not sure, because I, I can't remember if they have to come back for plans and specification approval. I, I'm not a hundred percent, so.
Okay. That's okay. It'll happen.
But it did get approved.
Great.
You know, it only took two years, I think, maybe longer.
That was for city council to have it.
Yeah.
The committee before that. Jay?
No, no comment.
No comments.
I, I will, I will get that information from the public works director.
All right. Thank you very much. It's all.
Hey, Paul, last thing on Pacific Coast Commons, just for reference, what is the density of that property, of that project?
It's about eighty-four units to the acre.
Gotcha, so anything we're looking at tonight was, was below that threshold?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other commissioner comments? All right, well, with that, we are adjourned, and our next regular scheduled meeting is April eleventh at five thirty PM.